Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. It's 9:38 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of November 20, 2012 is called to order. The first item is approval of agenda and order of priority. May I have a motion, please?
No motion.
It's moved by Nancy.
Supported.
Supported by Cassandra. Any changes?
This includes removing the discussion on legislative issues to the first item.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So, our original posting had this in the afternoon, or more recent posting moved this to the morning, but that's just formalizing it. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Okay. Merz, introductions, please.
I'd like to introduce you to the members of the State Board of Education and people seated around the table. To my immediate -- sorry, better use the microphone. To my immediate left is Mike Flanagan. Michael Flanagan, he's the Superintendent of Public Instruction. We call him the State Superintendent. He's also Chairman of the Board. To his left is John Austin. John is the President of the Board and he resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Albrecht is seated next to John. She is the Board's Vice President. She's from Rochester Hills. Nancy Danhoff is from East Lansing. She's the Board's Secretary. And seated next to her is Kathleen Strauss from Detroit. The Michigan Teacher of the Year is seated next to Kathleen Strauss, and she's Bobby Joe Kenyon, and she's from Ottawa Hills High School, which is in Grand Rapids Public Schools. And she's the Teacher of the Year that's seated here representing teachers. And as we go across the table, we have Greg Tetter from the Governor's Office, Eileen Weiser from Ann Arbor, Dan Varner from Detroit, Richard Zilee from Dearborn. Richard Zilee is the Board's NASBY Delegate. It's their association, the National Association of State Boards of Education. And next to me is Mary Ann Yard McGuire. She's the Board's Treasurer. She's from Detroit. Thank you.
Great timing, Richard. Perfect. You know, also, I think it's appropriate, would two folks stand up, Michelle Fecto and Lupe Ramos Montini. These are two State Board Members who've been elected recently to the State Board of Education. Thanks for attending today. And I just thought I'd mention, I have a chance to report later in the meeting, but I really think it's a pioneering effort on the part of Ypsilanti and Willow Run communities to pull off this consolidation. I know there's a lot of talk about where the efficiencies are there, if you can consolidate school districts. And I know there's concern about the state kind of getting involved and pushing that, but it's great to see two communities that were struggling on their own doing the right thing. And it's going to be the best thing that could have happened for the kids of Ypsilanti and Willow Run. And that got formalized at the, not only during the election on a few Tuesdays ago, but in addition to that, last night, they appointed the new Board. And the new Board is made up of some of the old Board from both districts and some out-and-out new members. So I think it's a great day, and I hope it becomes a model, a pioneering model for other districts to consider. Yes, sir.
Could I, as a personal note, my youngest daughter's attending Ypsilanti's New Town, which is a wonderful, new innovative high school with a model base in California that is terrific. The fact that this consolidation went through is wonderful, and it means there may be some certainty about financing, staffing, and the future of this high school, which my daughter's enjoying and is learning very much. Without it, the teachers were at sea, nervous about finances, many have sought other jobs. So the kind of coming together to figure out how to support innovative schools in a public school context is ensuring my daughter may be able to continue at a wonderfully innovative high school.
That's right, John. Thank you. Marty and the team, if you want to join us at the table, I've got just a few opening remarks. First of all, I wrote superintendents this morning because in, we get news briefs, and in reading some of the news briefs, I think there's some misunderstanding about what's going on. Let me just read what I wrote superintendents. "Hey, y'all. I was in Georgia last week with my counterparts and Arnie Duncan." I'm a Brooklyn kid, but I can do "hey, y'all" when I'm around for a couple of days. "I thought I'd write you to give our strategy on all the things popping here in Lansing. First, the McClellan slash Oxford report, not a bill, is taking comments till December 14. So we'll do that for what we're doing this week for the EAA bill, a position demonstrating the State Board MDE concerns today at the State Board meeting. We'll work in that same thoughtful way through the 300-page Oxford piece and take a position at our December meeting to submit by December 14." So why am I writing? The EAA bill is here now, and it has problems, as I indicated last week in my email to you, and there are hearings on it right now in lame duck and may pass in some form before the first of the year. So don't take your eye off the ball and be snookered. The reason I wrote it is I just think people are mixing these up, and there's a thoughtful way to do it. I appreciate the Board meeting as a Legislative Committee in kind of a special session yesterday and making this item available. I also very much appreciate watching Republicans and Democrats work together on this and model it. And there's not always agreement on every issue, but just the idea that, what I thought as a kind of an observer, as State Superintendent, but also as observer, is see thoughtful people who are candid but respectful of each other and look for ways to propose, not just oppose. Find things, I mean, what I wrote last week, there's some clear things that I, in my role, oppose in the EAA bill. But I also think it's important, and what you've done, and we'll have more discussion about it in this item, is some of the things that you propose also are there. So I'm very proud to be associated with you. I appreciate your work on that. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Marty Ackley, to kick this off, and then I know it's going pretty quickly to the Board itself.
Right. Thank you, Mike. There is a lot of reform legislation in the legislature that's been introduced. There are some things on the front burner, the greatest of which is the legislation that would codify in state law the Education Achievement Authority. There are two bills, one in the House, one in the Senate. They are companion bills. They are the same. The Senate Bill's 1358 and its House Bill 6004. Last week, Mike did email the local superintendents around the state with his concerns with the bill, and it includes the Governor's appointment of the Chancellor, no, I'm sorry, of the State Reform Redesign Office, and the automatic transfer of the bottom 5 percent schools, who've been there for three consecutive years, as well as several applicable sections in the state school code that all other school districts must comply with, that the EAA would not have to comply with, as well as the automatic transfer of some vacant buildings in school districts being on a list given to the Department of Education here to house or to keep the list. The Board's Legislative Committees met a couple times, and they've come up with some statements on this legislation, as well as other pieces of legislation. And so I throw it over to Nancy Danhoff, who is the Chair of the State Board's Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Marty. The State Board of Education's Legislative Committee is very, very concerned about all legislation that goes through. It is our constitutional responsibility to have direct supervision over all of public education. As a result, the policies that govern that education is something that's very critical to the success of the students of our state. As a result, we have taken these three pieces of legislation and looked at them from variety of ways and had multiple conversations about their impact on the students of the state. And the Board is at a point where we need to bring this forward to the Board as a whole, or, excuse me, the Committee is at a point where we need to bring this forward to the Board as a whole and have a fulsome conversation about how this affects students in Michigan and what our position is. We feel it's important as constitutional officers of the state to make certain that the Legislature and the Governor know the positions of the State Board of Education. We have three bills today that we will be considering, conversations of. As Marty said, Senate Bill 1358, House Bill 6004 for the EAA changes that need to be made, or they believe need to be made, I should say. House Bill 15, excuse me, 5923, that is the New Form Schools Bill, and Senate Bill 620, which is the Conversion School Bill. Each of us have taken a role in looking at this, putting together recommendations, and a discussion statement for the Board to take part in. And we're going to first consider Senate Bill 1358, House Bill 6004, and Cassandra Albrecht is going to present that.
Oh, thank you, Nancy. The Legislative Committee has met twice in the last few weeks. The last time we met was just yesterday. And in our meeting yesterday, we took a real close look at the proposed EAA legislation and have developed a set of recommendations that we would like to present to the full Board today that we believe need to be made in order to strengthen and/or fix, if you will, the legislation as we see it from the Legislative Committee. I'll just mention these briefly, and then we can get into a discussion about them. The first is that the proposed legislation greatly expands the role of the EAA beyond its original mission, and we find that to be concerning. We also believe that there's items within this bill that are not related to the EAA, and therefore it's inappropriate for them to be in this particular bill. And namely, that would be Section 1260 and Section 1260A, which has to do with language regarding facilities, local school buildings, essentially, that would be put into a list and then utilized for sale or lease to other educational facilities or educational management companies. We don't believe that this has anything to do with the purpose of the EAA and therefore should not be in this particular bill. The second one, I'm sorry, the third, is that this particular bill appears to remove testing requirements and common assessments that are required of other schools in the state of Michigan would no longer be required of EAA schools. We find this to be problematic because it has a number of unintended consequences, including, you know, whether or not these schools will continue to be in the top-to-bottom list, and then also the impact it could have on potential federal funding for the state of We also have some concerns about the constitutionality of some of the items in the bill. For example, it moves appointments that are currently under the Michigan Department of Education and Mike Flanagan, under the Governor's Office, and that is concerning. It also has a requirement of moving schools into the EAA regardless of whether they're showing improvement or not. We're also concerned that while there are very specific requirements for transferring schools into the EAA, the legislation does not address how you actually get out of the EAA, which could ultimately mean that schools never can work their way back into self-governance. So we think that that needs to be addressed in the bill as well. The bill also, either directly or indirectly, references House Bill 5923, which has not been voted on as of yet. And we believe that those references, both direct and indirect, should be removed from the EAA bill, primarily those that are related to the authorizing powers of the EAA, the ability to use adjunct instructors to teach in the EAA schools, and language that says to expand the number of types of public entities permitted to operate, manage, authorize, establish, and oversee public schools. Finally, we believe that something that should be included in the legislation is a minimum expectation of quality, particularly if the EAA is moving into chartering or those types of areas that we would like to see school operators and turnaround models that have a credible expectation of delivering improved educational quality. And as of right now, we did not see that in this legislation.
So let's open this discussion. Are there other comments by other Board Members on this recommendation?
Eileen, please, and John.
Having just recently visited the EAA on Friday, as a potential funder, I was delighted to see the activities that were going on there. And one of the things that we discussed yesterday in the Legislative Committee was the, I think there's a provision in one or both of these bills to allow the EAA to share its curriculum or services with non-member schools. I'd like to insert that in the second paragraph here because the way that this is worded, it states very strongly that we don't want them to have authority in other areas. So I think that putting that in parentheses, saying retaining that provision is appropriate and useful.
So I'm a little confused.
Okay. So in the second paragraph, the proposed legislation opens the EAA up to include schools and then anywhere in the state. And then I would put in parentheses that the bill's provisions allowing the EAA to provide its curriculum or other services to non-member schools, or whatever appropriate wording, should be in there, should be retained.
John, please.
I'd just like to reinforce the nature of our recommendations are, one, we very much want to see a successful EAA, and I think, as Eileen noted, it can be, can be very effective in helping turn around failing schools and providing perhaps a new school where one is needed to replace an old school. The recommendations we're making in total are to mostly sort of strip from the EAA bill any kind of ornaments that have to do with unrelated new market or new school creation and issues such as whether the EAA could be an authorizer of public schools anywhere in the state, decoupled from its mission of taking a school, turning it around, or replacing it with a better school. These are the intents of our recommendations, I do believe, and also to try to really align the EAA's leadership not as a totally new, separate government entity that only the Governor controls, but to have some acknowledgement that it is part of the fabric of our state's system. It is a turnaround district that needs to be under the leadership of the State Board in our constitutional duties and align the roles of superintendent to have some flexibility in making sure that schools that move in and out are treated appropriately.
Kathleen, please.
Thank you. Mary Ann and I attended the meeting of the House Education Committee yesterday, and it was very enlightening. Richard McMillan testified. I think you were there for a while. I thought I saw you.
I was listening, yeah. Richard McClellan, yes.
Not McMillan, McClellan. Yeah.
It meant McClellan. And he explained how he got involved with this, the Governor approached him in April of 2011 to come up with something to, with an EAA, and that he figured out that you could use an interlocal agreement of local governments to establish something. He wasn't, he took the legislation for the EAA, for the Reform District that was in Willow Run already, and the interlocal agreement, and put them together to establish the EAA in Detroit. And the Committee had lots of questions, and it was really interesting. And then after lengthy testimony by him and Bill Ruston, there was some further testimony from citizens. Most people opposed it, opposed the EAA altogether. And I came away agreeing with the people who opposed it altogether. They were very convincing. The, it was, they raised a lot of good questions, some of which we have talked about here, that the EAA in Detroit has been in existence for just three months, operating since September, and there's no, there's no data to show whether they're good, bad, or indifferent. And it's a little early to establish statewide what they're doing there because we don't know if it's going to work. So, and we, in the meantime, schools that are not in the EAA are, some of them doing successful turnarounds by not, without being in the EAA, just staying in their regular districts. And this whole EAA takes away the Board schools from the locally elected Board. This bill, the way it's worded, and I think some of the recommendations that we made yesterday are good and would improve the bill, but it really sets up what I would consider a parallel education system, parallel to the State Department of Education and the State Board. And the state constitution clearly states that the State Board of Education shall supervise all public education. And this sort of takes, this bypasses the State Board of Education, takes it out, puts it under the Governor's Office, and theoretically, I mean, it's not under the Department, it's not under the Board, and I think that's wrong. And so while I support the recommendations that we made to improve the bill, in case it passes, which I, it probably will, I personally oppose the bill, period.
Richard. I think you've put your finger on the issue. It is a parallel system, and the reason why it was seen necessary is because the existing system for which we are most directly responsible has failed.
Well, I don't agree with that, but that's.
And that is, that's also the motivation behind further school choice. Now, I think there is a statewide function for the State Board of Education to advise the Governor and Legislature on the needs and costs of public education, but that's a little different than supervising every institution that exists. And I guess that is where I would feel there's maybe a deeper issue among us here on the Let me say that I do think that institutionalizing in an operation that's been in operation for only three months, it does seem a little hasty to me. So I think the, I approach this whole issue with caution, and I think that there are a number of legitimate concerns that are expressed here. But I think that the basic idea of the EAA is an idea worth trying, certainly, and I think the, there's a trade of freedom for a certain kind of accountability that makes sense. I think the concern that EAA veer from its mission, as expressed in our Board Statement, is well-taken. A few things are as dysfunctional as passing a law ostensibly for one purpose and then using it for another purpose, and we don't want to, that would be dishonest with the So I think that there are a number of good concerns expressed here, but the basic idea, I think, is worth trying, and I look forward to seeing how it turns out, and I hope that it will give us good grounds for enacting it into law. I do, I do think that there is a matter of accountability that every public school that receives state funds, there needs to be a clear accountability to the Superintendent of State Education. So I think on that score, too, that's a concern that I would share. Thank you. Mary Ann, please.
I'd like to say I support the changes we made yesterday, but I still do not support the bill as a whole, and that's mainly because I don't support the EAA itself. To me, it represents one more in a long list of state takeovers of Detroit schools, and every one of these takeovers, which we in Detroit have seen now for the last 14 years, has produced a steady academic and financial decline in the city. The EAA, as has been said, is still unproven, and in fact, it was a huge failure in Kansas City where it was first introduced by John Covington. I don't believe there's anything individualized or innovative about putting children in front of computers to learn at their own pace and then ask for waivers from taking statewide tests that all other districts must take. I'd like to say I think Detroit needs freedom from emergency managers and people with no educational background and no success so far in balancing budgets or finances. So for me, I'd like to see the resources that are being put into an unproven system like the EAA to be put into districts that have had their resources steadily taken away over the last 14 years. And that, of course, would be Detroit.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Dan, please.
Thank you. I'm out of practice. So I find myself struggling to catch up, having been out of the country for a week. It's amazing how much has happened. But I want to get on record that I am supportive of the codification of the EAA. I think that Detroit kids deserve new models, and that the codification of this district is an opportunity for Detroit kids to get something different. That having been said, as currently written, the bill really is a mess. Let me just put it that way. So a couple of thoughts, and fully supportive of all of this. One is that choice, kind of the existence of choice, really is not a super drug that will heal the patient here. We've had a ton of choice around school options in Detroit for a long time now, and by itself it doesn't do a thing. Coupled with other things, I would argue that it is a remedy for what ails us, but by itself, it's clearly not enough, which is why these recommendations are so important. I would note first with regard to the charter, kind of the ability of the EAA to charter schools, that the EAA Board itself kind of took a pass on an opportunity to charter schools that were not specifically designed to replace schools that it had taken over governance for earlier this year. And so I think this recommendation, that its chartering authority be restricted to the schools that it's designed to govern, is completely appropriate with the position even of the EAA Board of Directors, and so perfectly appropriate. And it should, I would argue even, support Eileen's comment, and think not only should it be allowed to provide its curriculum, but that it, in fact, it's being, it's created explicitly for the purpose of turning around these poor schools, it should be required to provide its curriculum and make itself as transparent as possible to other districts statewide, to provide all of its learnings to everybody else statewide. I mean, it will only benefit all Michigan kids if that's the case. There's plenty of overreach in this bill, having to do with the facilities and so on and so forth, and so, and consistent with these recommendations, really support all of that. And I think the, maybe the most critical thing here really is around the supervision of the State Superintendent and the use of accountability or assessments. Any exemption of this district from assessments really doesn't make any sense. In a world, I mean, clearly what we've gone to in Detroit and increasingly around the state, and Detroit is now, I think, the second most heavily chartered school district of any big city in the country, right, according to the New York Times a couple of weeks ago. And that trend is clearly continuing with the cap off of charter schools in the state. In a world where we're asking parents to choose between competing options, it's necessary for parents to get accurate information about the relative merits of one school against another. And it's got to be apples-to-apples comparisons. Any attempt to allow any school, kind of to opt out of the existing assessment regime or the assessment regime that we would ask all schools to be a part of, does it dis- or the assessment regime that we would ask all schools to be a part of, does it disservice ultimately to kids and parents? There may be problems with our assessment regime. If that's the case, then let's address those problems, but that's not grounds for exempting some schools and not others from the regime. That really ultimately gives parents, makes for parents and students what is otherwise a difficult system to work through, nearly impossible. So strongly supportive of all of these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. By the way, that, our next item is on the smarter balance, which I think is that very regime of assessment that's going to be good and that everyone should be subject to, including the EAA. Nancy, please.
About two weeks ago, three of us, Mary Ann, John, and I, went to the first House Education Subcommittee that was reporting out on this bill, and we testified before that committee. And I raised the same concerns that I think Kathleen and Mary Ann have raised, and that is that this system has only been operating schools for three months. We have no data to suggest whether they will be successful, not successful, complete failures, or somewhere in between. And so from my perspective, you know, it's, anytime you're doing something like this, it's always important to have data-driven results. You know, you start with a pilot, you test it, see how it works, and then you either expand it or you change it so that it becomes more successful. And we do seem to be getting the cart before the horse here by doing this. And my question is, what if the EAA is not the model of success? You know, what happens now that it's codified into law and then we find out, because it's only been in existence for three months, that the reality is, it's not the be-all, end-all of transforming schools that have a history of not performing well into highly performing schools? So although I do believe that this piece of legislation is going to move, and it's either going to move with our assistance in making it better, or it's not. So I think it is important that we do give recommendations to the legislature, but I would entertain, based on my concerns and Mary Ann's concerns and Kathleen's concerns, and I'm sure some others as well, and I think, Richard, you had the same point, too, that we include maybe a statement saying that we believe this legislation may in fact be premature. However, if you choose to move forward with it, these are our recommendations.
Thank you. Nancy, please. And then Eileen.
Got to get that back on. Back in the early 1800s, my husband's great-great-grandfather started a school in Zealand when Zealand was first founded, and he was made the schoolmaster because he could speak English and read it. That was his only qualifications. Eventually, over time, the school system in Michigan became codified. I'm sure there were people who felt that this codification was probably not in the best interests of their local communities. But they did it anyway, and through a number of constitutions of the state, it has become part of the way we do our work. I think in the spirit of this country, which is always trying to get better, always trying to make certain that we provide the best for our communities, for our populace, for our children at large, it is important that we not lose sight of the risks and the possible successes of trying something new, of getting outside the box. Perhaps this is premature, but without the ability to even try it, we'll never know. And I think that that's the purpose of this bill, at least from my perspective, and it may be a naive perspective, is to give us the opportunity to try something new. Clearly, there is enough failure, not just in Detroit, Detroit just happens to be the epicenter of this. It isn't just Detroit. It's of education in general for children. There have been enough failures in education, intentional or unintentional, really doesn't matter. The fact is, it's been failures in schools. There have been many successes, and those successes oftentimes have come as a result of things like waivers from our superintendent, of people getting outside the box, and quite frankly, just not telling anyone. I think that it's important that we give our communities, our children, our parents, our state, the opportunity to see what else might work. I believe that there needs, as there have been in other bills that we will talk about momentarily, a piece in this that says, you know what, if this doesn't work, here's how we get ourselves out of this. This is in legislation, this is not in the Constitution. Big difference. Legislation, as you know, is changed annually. It seems to be a self-fulfilling prophecy to keep our legislature in business. And that's okay. That's the way democracy works. But I think that to not have this in place, to not allow us to try, to not allow us to see if something else better might work, is ill-conceived on our part. I agree with the recommendations. I agree that they need to make certain that they have the same accountability that everyone else does. I agree that there are many things in this bill that go far beyond the intention of the EAA originally and should be stripped out of this legislation. I agree that the chartering ability of this, or this, what shall we call it, governmental entity, as it's referred to in the bill, is for one purpose and one purpose only, and should not be a catch-all for anybody else who wants to charter and doesn't have any other where else to go, oh, let's go to the EAA. I don't believe that's important. I don't believe that's a good stead for our children. So the recommendations we have made and agreed upon in the committee, I agree with. And I agree with what Eileen has put in as well. But I do believe, too, we need to give this an opportunity to succeed, or fail, and then have a way to get out of it if it does.
Thank you. Eileen and then Richard.
I agree with the comment, can you hear me? I never know whether I need to have reverb on this. Can you, is the mic on? Is it, can you hear me?
You want to trade out?
I'm swamped with microphones. I'm drowning in microphones.
That's better.
Well, it's hard to explain the excitement and passion I saw Friday with the use of creative teaching and technology that meets kids in their everyday life and makes sure that their progress is happening in school. It is, it was for me, and granted, I only taught, saw two schools, but I saw K8 in four classrooms. For me, it was the first time I've seen differentiated instruction for an entire classroom, and it was phenomenal. It's evidence-based, kids are taking responsibility for their learning, which was, I think, the biggest surprise that I had. Every child in that classroom could explain what they were doing, why, and what their goal was. And I saw teachers who have passion and dedication and feel like they can succeed. The Board needs to see it and to understand it, to see what the possibilities are ahead. I'm the only Board member who's been to it. I went as a funder. I know that they want us to come, and I'm hoping that that will happen soon. I'm particularly hoping because Oakland ISD converted its K5 system to blended instruction, voluntarily, with a waiver. That's my understanding. I haven't seen that either. But I think for us to see the possibilities ahead, that we need to go and see these schools. So I support the draft statement because we have a role to advise the legislature and lawmakers on this bill's impact on existing schools, on the way we educate our children now. But I also have to point out that what we envision happening in the next five years or what we don't want to envision is actually taking place. And for the Board to not be aware of it and to not touch it and see it and feel it, I think is inappropriate for much longer. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard, please.
Nancy's remarks sparked this thought in me, and just the question, what will this legislation, what will this proposed legislation do for Michigan children that we're not already able to do through the EAA as it stands and our current regulations? If a case can be made for the benefits to Michigan children for passing this sooner, then I would support its passage, but I, it's not evident to me, and it seems to me to be a matter that could wait to see how the present work turns out and will be able to recommend a fitter piece of legislation.
Greg, please.
Sure, thanks. And just want to thank the Board for taking this up and making yourselves available at committee hearings. And, you know, I'd like to think that that just strengthens the ultimate product, and I don't know, call me young and naive, but I do believe in the committee process, so thanks for putting this in writing and getting something, you know, thoughtful, put down on paper. I just want to, I guess, insert a comment or two about the timing. And I understand that the EA is new, and I understand that it's only been, you know, running schools for a few months, but the concepts aren't new, and the platform that they're using has been developed for years. So I think what you have to ask yourself, I guess, as leaders in education, is how do you weigh that against the cons of waiting another year and letting a kid progress in a school that we all know is failing and has been failing since we've been ranking schools in 2000 or since the list has been created? So, you know, it's a judgment call to some extent, and I personally, you know, don't think that waiting is the, waiting is an option. I think, you know, we know what doesn't work, and I think, you know, we've waited long enough for some of these kids, and, you know, for those reasons, I guess, I think the timing is right for the EAA. I'll also, you know, some of the other things that have been said, you know, I'm not of the view that the EA is exempt from state testing. I think it might not be specific enough in the legislation, and I don't think that that was anyone's intent. I think that they currently are taking any state assessments, and that's something I think maybe we can clearly work to clarify over the next couple of weeks. And I also think that there is a section on page 11 of the bill that, you know, sort of says that the EAA is under the oversight of the State Board of Education, and I think that they do have to follow, you know, the law is set forth in the school code, and, you know, I think it's, to the extent that some of these things can be remedied with more specific references, I think that, you know, that's certainly something we can work towards. So, you know, I think that we can, you know, I don't, I personally am not comfortable taking one state assessment, using that state assessment for transferring schools into the EA and then having them take a different state assessment. So I don't think that was, I don't think that would be good public policy personally. And, you know, you know, I can take this opportunity to invite you guys all to the EA on behalf of John Covington. I know, Eileen, you've got a chance to see it, and I think we, I think, are in the process of putting together walkthroughs for some other groups, so, you know, if that's something I can organize through you, John, we'll try and, you know, get you guys down there, you know, as soon as, they're kind of swamped, but as soon as they've got the, got a free day and we find something that works, so hopefully we can...
I'm going to call myself for just a moment at that point. I, to Nancy's point earlier, I'm, a couple of things that, I'm with Dan on codifying this, and here's why. First of all, I think I should still be the one that appoints the reform officer, not the governor, as you know, Greg, and I've clarified that position a number of ways. I'm a little uncomfortable that, that we together, the Board, the Superintendent, and the reform officer, will determine which schools do or do not go into a state reform office, which is in a whole other law. It exists with or without the EAA. I'm a little uncomfortable that I do that into an entity that's not codified. And to me, I think the issues related to codification do not mean that the blended learning model that's there that may or may not work is absolutely the, that has nothing to do with the legislation. That Covington and his team, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but that doesn't codify that that's the team that's in the EAA. But to me, it at least codifies that we have a legitimate, thoughtful, with hearings, codification of something as opposed to something that I don't, I don't, I don't see malice in having done a different way. But, you know, once you get a place where Eastern Michigan and inter-local agreements and all that, I think that was a good startup, but it's not a way to proceed with something that's already in the law that requires a place where schools that aren't making it. And then, as you know, I mean, to me, the reason I think it's important that we own the appointment of a reform officer and that the Board and the state superintendent have involvement is, I mean, this respectfully, but John Covington and I have even publicly news-free pressed debated that, another provision there, we will not automatically put schools into that. I mean, I know schools right now, we know, we talk about them every Friday in our meetings here, that they were so-called bottom 5 percent, they were 1 percent of school. They're now like a 4.9. They have made tremendous growth. They have, the team has worked together, the teachers and the principals have totally, in many cases, by the way, put in the very similar model that you're seeing at the EAA in some cases. This is not like that's all new rocket science. But, so if you have a school, let's say in Midland, Grand Rapids, wherever, that's gone from a bottom 1 percent to 4.9, but technically is then still under the 5, we wouldn't, we wouldn't see that as a school that should be put in any entity, whether it's the EAA or some others, because they've already got a formula that's working and have done whatever they need to do to make it work. And then they can stay with their community. So I, to me, and it may be a little selfish on my part, although I'm not going to do this forever, so I mean, I think it's a State Board, State Superintendent issue, that that should reside here. And I guess the reason I'm agreeing with Dan and others, I think, on the codification is just as opposed to what we have now, which is a series of inter-local agreements that's going to continue if we don't have this bill. And then I worry about amendments to those inter-local agreements, whereas some of this stuff that we feel most strongly about needs to be protected in the law, I hope, such as not automatic 5 percent going in, state superintendent appointing reform officer, testing that is fair to all and not being exempted from, which the smarter balance will do, by the way. We'll make that what Dan was implying, so. John, please.
First, I'm pleased that, it seems, everyone is supportive of the recommendations with the changes we discussed, that, how to improve and focus the EA legislation, in spite of different perspectives on and concerns about the overall utility. I just wanted to appreciate your comments, Greg, and I wanted to, in part, associate myself with Dan and Nancy's comments in particular. I do want to see an effective EAA. We need an effective state turnaround functionality that makes sure kids aren't trapped in failing schools. I think we were encouraged, despite any reservations, when Dr. Covington came and talked about the approach, the personalized growth approach, and we all want to see how we can support that type of learning, that type of assessment in EA schools and beyond. And so I certainly want to see an EAA structured and focused appropriately succeed, and I know there are different points of view here on the overall utility, but I do appreciate that the recommendations we're making on how to improve legislation, should it pass, appear to be universal or positive contributions from this Board, and I really appreciate them.
Thank you, John. I think it was Mary Ann and Eileen.
I'd just like to add something with regards to an attitude that seems to be out there that Detroit schools are persistently failing. If you were to look at rankings right now, they would be. But my contention is, and I'm not alone in this, is that that got that way because of all these emergency managers, state takeovers that have come in, have closed schools, have closed a number of schools where children were doing quite well on the meats and on other forms of assessment, and were dispersed, spread around to schools that were not doing so well. And some of these kids never catch up because they're... And some of these kids never catch up because they're, they're in different schools for a year. It's so sad. And it's, and I hear you talking about the possibility of none of this taking place anyplace else around the state. But what we're looking at here is maybe trying out a plan in Detroit. But then where does it go from there? Does it just take all Detroit schools and put them into charters? Because there's no, there's no reference in here for how schools get out once they're in. I find it very upsetting.
Thank you, Mary. Eileen, please.
Actually, I don't have anything new to add except for one clarification that I'd like to discuss briefly. And of course, I have edits. I'm channeling from my father, the late editor of the Saginaw News. But on the second page, in the paragraph that starts, "require the EAA to be part of common statewide accountability," about halfway down, there's a line that begins, "statewide growth model data system for now under development." And I just wasn't sure what the "for now" is. It's the second sentence. This would provide essentially an opt-out of state assessments for the EAA in addition to an opt-out of the state's accountability system and proposed statewide growth model data system for now under development. Some part of that doesn't seem like it fits, and I don't know which part it is.
The council and educator effectiveness growth model, which is currently under development is potentially also not part of what the EAA would be asked to participate in.
So you could just say the data system under development? Okay. So I'll just, these are edits that are small, and I'll just give them to Marilyn. But that one confused me. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So, John, how would you like to proceed?
I think we've got three pieces of legislation. We want to have discussion about the recommendations on each, and then we need to figure out what's appropriate. I hope, I do want us to vote on the resolutions, but whether we need to do that after lunch to allow public comment on what they've heard this morning and then take them up, I just want to make sure we don't forget to do that. Does that make sense? Is that appropriate for our protocols?
I have a good idea.
I won't be here this afternoon, but you certainly heard my comments, so.
Thank you.
Nancy, did you want to take us to the next?
So the next bill that we would like to take up is House Bill 5923, which is the new schools bill, and John took a thought and thought to be quite prolific in his writing, and so I will let him explain that.
And Marilyn, do we have copies of our recommendations for that piece? And while we're sharing these, I am pleased and proud that, again, seeing this legislation be introduced with, certainly the concern I had and many others was that it might be something that would be moved on in a lame duck legislature. What we're saying is we have a bipartisan board legislative committee, and I hope a bipartisan resolution that basically says, slow down, this legislation is not ready for prime time to encourage it to be much more thoughtfully considered. And since it is clearly, one, the new school creation being proposed here is a, you know, huge policy change in how we organize schools, and it's a very different education system. It is clearly described to be the first policy enabler linked to what we're now seeing, some of the, you know, creative and potentially helpful financing ideas that are coming from the project that the governor's office has encouraged. But it is a huge set of policy change in how we create a host of new schools. And I think the language, so it needs to be considered much more thoughtfully and in the context with the overall financing of this whole system of education in the state. So what we're saying together in our draft is, you know, it's certainly, to date, as written, and I think we are ending up saying we oppose it as written, in part to say, slow down, stop, don't do this, certainly, in a lame duck legislature. But it does not provide needed limitations on regulations on the number and nature of new schools and learning options, which are numerous in their nature and character, some of which we do want to help figure out how to create and develop as part of our overall public school system. But the most concerning issues are, in the bullet points, as written, it does not include attention to how does all these new schools contribute to overall improvement in quality of learning and outcomes for Michigan students overall? It doesn't focus new school creation at all on where there's need for new schools where kids aren't learning. It does not define expectations at all that there'll be quality new schools created or quality control, which, again, from my point of view, was a big mistake of the charter expansion of last year. We did not include any expectation that the schools that would be created would provide as good or better education. We don't need, this is my view, we don't need a lot of new schools that deliver worse education potentially. So there's, we need to define, as all of this, some expectations for the quality of the new schools and the ability of new school creators to credibly be able to deliver a quality education. Because we do want everything to be performance-based, but we need to have performance expectations built into the fabric of new school creation. And the most, the biggest issue is, all of these new schools would certainly, and learning modalities that would be potentially opened up and authorized, have tremendous impact on the maintenance, the existing public school systems we have as resources potentially, if the financing changes were to happen, combined with this, tremendous impact on schools overall and the quality potentially of learning of kids in existing schools, as well as concern about the quality of the new schools. So what our legislative committee fashioned was some language that was agreed to or reflects the bipartisan nature of this board to basically say, as written, issues unattended to in this legislation, so we oppose this being acted on. But it should be taken up as part of the thoughtful discussion of how do we encourage more choice, which we want, as long as it's high-quality choice, and it is defined to improve learning outcomes for those who make new choices and those who are in existing public schools.
Further discussion. Cassandra, please.
I just want to say, reiterate what John said, and this particular bill I find very disturbing. When you take it in conjunction with the legislation that we just discussed, as well as a potential school aid rewrite, that I don't think any of us have had a chance to read the full 308 pages of yet, this could literally, I think, be the end of community schools as we know them. When you think about, 90 percent of parents in the state who send their child to a public school, send them to a community school. And if we are creating legislation that can essentially wipe them out because we have now created a system where anyone can start a school, they can do it anywhere, at any time, and we also have a system where the money follows the child, our community schools are really going to struggle. So from my perspective, this bill does not give parents choice, it takes it away. And that's concerning to me. And I am absolutely opposed to the bill as written and support the language that we've come up with.
Thank you very much. Others, Nancy, please.
I think anything that, whoa. Is this better? Could blow people out of here. I think anything that speaks to the necessity of those who are trying to support, and this may seem a little harsh, but honestly, the fractured nature of this bill concerns me greatly. I have to ask, who are we trying to benefit? Are we trying to benefit those who could create schools because they could? Or are we trying to find out what is best, in the best interest of children? And this is an argument that this board has kind of held up as a litmus test for everything we've done, and I think this should be no different. It's important that as we move forward and try to find answers that might help children, all children succeed in whatever way they need, that we have that at the very bottom, at the very top, at the very middle, everywhere within our consideration. How will this help children succeed? I'm struggling to find out how this will help children succeed. I understand how it will help business succeed, they can have their own schools. I can understand how it will help universities to succeed, they can have their own schools. I can understand how it would help every one of these groups that this supposedly allows to have a school succeed. What I can't find is how it helps children succeed. We have means and mechanisms in our current charter school laws, in our current waivers, in our current EAA that we're trying to codify. We have many means for which these people can avail themselves of to create a school within those mechanisms, should they desire. But I would then ask them the same question, how does this help children succeed? If, on the other hand, this is meant to provide different means for children to succeed because they learn differently, then we just need to rewrite this, because I'm not finding it here. And so I would encourage us to support the recommendations that we have, especially the one on the analysis of how these new schools will contribute to overall improvement in the quality of learning and outcomes for Michigan students. I would like it to be more than an analysis, I would like it to be a belief on how they contribute to that. And then, if we can get to that, if we can talk about how this helps children learn, how this helps children be more successful, how this does more than what we currently have available, then I will consider it, but not the way it's currently written.
Thank you, Nancy. Richard, did I see your hand?
Richard Halliburton in his travelogue, Seven League Boots, records going to a large Soviet city and being able, being unable to find any handkerchiefs. Why couldn't this city of 120,000 have any handkerchiefs for sale? It was the five-year plan. Economic central planning was thought to solve and anticipate everyone's needs in the coming years. Unfortunately, there were some things that were not anticipated, and the Soviet economy did not have the flexibility to meet the overlooked needs. Now, I think the same issue is here. Some members of the board are wedded to the thought of one grand system that meets every child's needs. But that has clearly failed. That's why there's the call for ever more school choice. I think one of the flaws behind the thinking in the proposed statement is the notion that quality is one-dimensional. What is a quality school for a student who wants to learn French may not be a quality school for a student who wants to learn gymnastics. If we believe that children are different, then they will, of course, benefit from a variety of educational approaches. If we believe that Michigan needs a diversity of gifts and skills developed, then Michigan will benefit from the diversity of curricula promoted by various entities. And I think this is the key issue in the bill, is that it encourages outside institutions to invest in education. This bill is an attempt to encourage folks who've stayed on the sideline to invest in education. Now, that means allowing them to have much more say and determination. I think the EAA is a good case in point. That got a lot of outside investment, private dollars invested, precisely because it was not controlled by the Michigan Department of Education, and therefore they had some freedom to pursue new vision, new curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. As I understand it, House Bill 5923 attempts to implement these ideas for the state at large. The bill may be too much, too soon, it may be, it may benefit from some tinkering, and with 300 pages, I don't doubt that it needs a lot of tinkering. But I think the basic ideas ought to be affirmed and applauded. And because the objection here is, kind of misses the benefit of the bill, I could not support it.
Just for clarification, I mean, the 300-page Oxford isn't in bill form yet. And I know there are some, this is one reason I sent what I did to the superintendent this morning, there's some confusion on my conspiracy-minded days, which I don't want to overstate. I wonder why they're all there at the same time.
But we're talking about the Lions, Posthumous Lions bill.
Yes, we are. I just meant it was different than the 300-page Oxford thing, which we're going to study and have a position on the next board.
How many pages is the Oxford bill?
Twenty.
My apology, I'm sorry. Mixed up my numbers.
They are related. I'm not.
And that's what I point, we need to help everyone understand. This is an enabler of a lot of new choices. And, Richard, you know, I respect, we need to create a lot of new, better choices for folks and figure out how we pay for it, which is the second piece. This is not it yet, but we need to come back and help improve it.
And the only reason I made that point was, I think this is, it's another opportunity with the audience that grew a little since earlier this morning, that there are three different things going on, and this, there are some interconnections, as John just said. But this on its own right, I mean, it's for me to say, but I guess I would say less as state superintendent, I would say more as a grandfather of one-year-olds and as a father of a daughter who teaches in public ed, that we need to let the system stabilize a bit, take a deep breath. You know, there's a lot of reforms in place, and I think what can happen is we can unintentionally demoralize our 100,000 folks in the classrooms that just think, oh, my gosh, it's never-ending. And, you know, that, this seems to me to be that. Now, the Oxford thing, which I appreciate that we're going to study in the legislative committee and then have some, we do need some updates on the School Aid Act that have been kind of a mismatch for 20 years. So the spirit behind that is one thing. 300 pages to be yet studied is another thing.
Yeah.
But definitely, the spirit behind that, I think, is a thoughtful one to try to say, and I appreciate that, that the other reason I wanted to distinguish it's not a bill yet is we all have an opportunity to comment on that until the 16th of December, and then it's going to be presented to Governor Snyder, and then it may or may not become a bill. So, I mean, we've got a lot of steps here on that one. And minimally, I hope, what that does, there's parts in there that we're alarmed, some of us are alarmed about right away. But minimally, I hope it updates the state aid and school code and provisions there that are just either outdated, or in some cases, our guys, and, you know, we have a department here also, obviously. But sometimes I think we forget in the policy world that we've got guys here on all these floors that are at odds sometimes because there are conflicts in the current state aid act and state school code that don't jive because it's just been a mismatch of things. So to that degree, when we study this Oxford thing, and Marty and his team give us an analysis soon, I think he promised tonight, as a matter of fact, he's not listening. No, I think he promised next week, if I'm remembering.
Happy Thanksgiving.
He'd end Thanksgiving early.
It makes good stuffing, that 308.
Yeah.
Said it right.
But I hear it from, I really think one of the fears, again, this is more my dad hat, but my daughter, it's, and she's an excellent, she's become very good at this in the last four or five years that she's been a new teacher, and, but it's overwhelming. I mean, it's like, who's on first, and what do I do next? And am I doing well, am I not doing well? I mean, the evaluation, I know I'm jumping around here, but the evaluation system, it would have been better had we waited till we had a system in place to perfect a growth evaluation instrument before we just mandated it last year. And we were all good on that, but it happened. And I think that's why it's important for what the board's doing today, weigh in on what's likely to be legislation, I would encourage, as some of you have said, as opposed to not weigh in and, you know, and take what we get. Nancy, please. Kathleen, please. You know, it's Kathleen and Nancy, I think I got that reversed. You know, it's Kathleen and Nancy, I think I got that reversed.
Okay. Well, like Cassandra, this 5923 is very disturbing. I could use stronger language, actually, but it's scary to me. We've had a public education system that I disagree with, with Richard, that it's a failure. I think, basically, it's been a success. And we have many schools in Michigan that are excellent. I don't, you keep going to, schools all over the place, even in Detroit, that are doing a very good job. And I think we ought to stress that more than we do. And schools, schools were part of the community. Communities were built around schools. And, as a matter of fact, years ago on this board, I proposed all-day full-service schools, and I envisioned the schools as being the hub of the community, which they were. And I wanted to strengthen that. Instead, with choice, it dissipates, and many communities are just becoming a shell of themselves because there's no good school there. Or else a charter school comes in, and it's run by a private for-profit company, and it's no better than the school that was there before, but it's not, it's the charter school, so it gives them choice. I mean, there are so many things about this that trouble me, that cities, why would cities want a charter schools? I mean, they've got enough trouble running them, they're a city. Even, I remember discussing this with Coleman Young, when people were trying to get Coleman Young to take over the schools in Detroit. This goes back a long way. And, what do I want to do that for? I've got enough problems with the city. And he was, he was smart, you know, he was experienced. You might not agree with everything that he did, but he could see the potential. And I think that we're not looking at the, what we call unintended consequences, or maybe they're intended by somebody, but most people, they'd be unintended consequences. What does it do to a community? What does it do to a city? What does it do to a suburban area, or a rural area? Where are the kids going to go? They create all these choices, but in some places, they've got miles and miles and miles, they've got to go someplace that they can get to. And as Mike said, we've done so much legislation in the past few years. We changed the tenure laws, we took the cap off, I shouldn't say we, the state, took the cap off charter schools, so we took the cap off online schools, and with no restrictions, I mean, there's no requirement that there be a live teacher in the, you know, dealing with the student in an online school. I mean, some of these things we've done are, I think, weren't well-thought-through. And I think that we've got a real, we have to absorb some of these things. And I think you're absolutely right about the evaluation. We required the schools to do the evaluation before we developed the system. And they're all doing it differently, and they're not very good, and, you know, creating all types of habits. And, you know, we, there was a teacher at the, going back to the EAA, a teacher from Mumford yesterday, who talked about her experiences at the EAA school, which was a completely different take from what had been testified to the week you were there. And that things are not, the class sizes are very large, there's been a large turnover in the teacher force already, so quite a few of them have resigned. They're not as experienced, I mean, they took a lot of young people right out of school with very little experience. And isn't all as good as it sounds when they describe what they're going to do? Doesn't work out that well. They still have the same kids with the same problems, who come from homes with, you know, difficult situations. And we expect everything to magically be better because it's a choice. As you said, or Dan, choice by itself is no choice. So just to create more schools, have different people create more schools, doesn't solve any problem. It's just, it adds to the confusion. And how kids, the kids get to where they're going to go? I mean, there are so many questions that this bill raises. And it just, the finance thing is a way of implementing this bill, as far as I can see. It's all designed together, and all drafted by the same people. McClellan said yesterday, he drafted the EAA bill, very clearly stated that, and he certainly had a hand in drafting the finance, the finance bill. And it's something we wanted to do, we've been saying for years, we should be looking at proposal A and changing it. So this is good to look at it, but I don't know if I'm going to like what they came up with, but change. At least we'll have a chance to talk about it. But this bill is scary, and it just opens up so many questions that there's no answers to. And I'm opposed to the bill altogether, but I approve the statements that we made because we've got to do something to correct it, its chances are to pass, which scares me. But I'd like to say no, period, but that doesn't seem to work very well. I support the proposals we've made to improve it, but I don't think it'll be improved enough. I mean, it just, the impact on the whole community and the whole state, I don't think has been really considered.
Nancy, then Richard, then Greg, then Dan, then Mary Ann. Help me with that.
Boy, I've got 30 seconds given the lineup. I think it's important that we remember that quality is important, but that without trial, we'll never know what quality is. We know what it looks like in the current system, we don't know what it could look like. I think what really concerns me the most about this bill is there are so many possibilities that they want to have, that I see no reason why, under the current system, they couldn't be put into effect. What are magnet schools? Magnet schools, what?
Lost that. So, I'll get my classroom teacher voice on. Wait a minute, here, I'll give you mine. Oops, that's the bottom fold, so we just got pushed hard.
Let's see if that works, kind of. Maybe, maybe not. Oh, good. Magnet schools could be a business school, magnet schools could be a university school, magnet schools could be a creative arts school, it could be, I work in a school that is a leadership law and government magnet school. That's what I see a lot of in here that people want to have. I do agree with Richard. I think it's imperative that we engage those people who have sat on the sideline far too long for helping, not hurting, the situation, and we ought to open our arms and welcome that. But we've got to quit looking at each other as it's one or the other. Why can't it be a both-and? So what I'm asking here is not necessarily to not have choice, because I think choice is important, but to have choice in a way that makes sense, that talks to what Mike talks about, that can we do this in a settling kind of a way? Can we use some of the existing means that we have to reach some of these very necessary goals? Can we try out some of the stuff we've put into place in the last five years, enough such that we can decide, yes, that works, no, it doesn't? Are we going to have people that will not want to take part in that even though they already exist? Yeah. Will that always be true? Yes. But I think that we need to, in good faith, again, I'm going to say, we need to, in good faith, come to the conclusion that whatever we do has to be done in the best interests of children. Not in the best interests of adults, but in the best interests of children. And I would encourage us to find a way to reach out and embrace those that would like to see this kind of legislation in place, to bring them into what already exists. And then if that doesn't work over a number of years, well, then let's adjust that. So that's what I meant by I think this fractures it, not that we don't have choice, but that we have it in a conscientious, thought-out, planned way.
Thank you. Richard, Greg, Dan, Mary Ann.
I just want to state my agreement with Kathleen regarding the success of public schools. And I am very, that's one reason why I do not see the fears, or do not share the fears that some on the board have, that this bill will undermine public schools, because, given the choice, 90, 95% of parents will choose a local community school. So I do not see this bill as undermining any but perhaps the 5% at the bottom. And I would also mention, too, I understand that at least half the board has taken advantage of school choice for their own children. And I think if this is a good thing for us, then I think we need to do what we can to extend it to other families throughout Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Greg, Dan, Mary Ann.
Thanks, Mike. I'll be quick. And, you know, there's a lot of rhetoric going back and forth about this bill, which I guess is not completely unexpected, but there actually are some interesting policy issues in the bill. And, you know, I think, I don't know if it dismantles public education if we allow Michigan to have residential schools for juniors and seniors in high school, that don't have a home to go to, or only eat hot meals in their school. I don't know if allowing, excuse me, allowing for a cultural school, you know, in some of our immigrant communities would dismantle public education. I don't know if Ford wants to build a new headquarters in Lansing, and they decide that they want to sponsor a kindergarten program for some of their employees. I don't know if that's, you know, I guess what I'd say is, you know, some of those, some of these issues that are actually buried in the bill might be worthy of more substantive discussion, if there are some things that, you know, Michigan should in fact consider. I mean, should the Department of State Police be allowed to have a program for kids that are interested in becoming state troopers? You know, maybe not. But to lump all these things together, maybe is just a little bit, maybe this doesn't do the service, I think, that we should be doing to some of these things, some of these maybe complex issues. So, and I definitely agree that the bill may be, you know, would need changes before it would ever be implemented, but I just want to remind the board that maybe there are some significant issues to consider, that's all.
Thanks, Greg. Dan, Mary Ann. The lawyer's got his pad out.
It's actually more, less a consequence of me being a recovering attorney than a consequence of my increasing age and having reached kind of capacity in my brain a long time ago. I feel like I have to write these things down, or I forget them. So, you know, like, we've had this debate, not debate, we've been talking a little bit about Detroit, kind of in the context of this work. And I just want to say with regard to that, really briefly, that I don't know that there's any way for us to know with certainty whether public education in Detroit, taken as a whole, is better or worse today than it was 20 years ago. Nor is there any way to know with any certainty why it might be better or worse than it was 20 years ago. Could be demographic changes, could be school governance changes, could be school financing changes, there are, like, I mean, there are a dozen reasons that could account for whatever change we might uncover if we were to do all the work. And so I'm left, every time this comes up, and I attend a lot of community meetings in Detroit where this issue comes up, I'm always left with the kind of thought, you know, we're not in the mid-'90s anymore. It's like, in the meantime, we've got kids going to schools who need a quality education, and the only thing that we should be concerned about is how best to deliver that quality education, and our role, at least, in ensuring that that quality education gets delivered. There are lessons to be learned from history, and we should learn them to the extent that we can, but this debate in particular just has always struck me as, I don't know how we ever get to the bottom of it. And so it just always feels like a way that we spend our time that just isn't productive for today's kids. All that having been said, you know, my opinion on it is that the anecdotal evidence suggests that we're getting about the same results today as we were 20 years ago, largely poorer to average or mediocre, with some outlying great performers and some outlying awful performers. And largely, while public education in the United States perhaps has been a success, I would argue that today, and I'm not really worried about what it was 50 years ago, today it is largely not serving effectively poor kids of color in this country and in this state, and in the city that I love and where I live. And that should be cause for alarm for all of us. I talk with kids and teachers in schools of all types, and some are happy and some are unhappy. It just, like, it is what it is right now. And I agree that schools are hubs of our communities, and they can be good hubs and they can be bad hubs. And it's up to us, in our role around governance tied to education, to try and ensure that they are good hubs, at least to the extent that they are delivering quality education for the kids and families that they serve. On a statewide level, so I do believe that we need a reform district in the state. And at the risk of opening up a whole new can of worms, the only model we really have for which there's been enough time to have any data is Louisiana. And it's not been perfect, for sure. Once again, I don't think there is any kind of be-all, end-all, you know, silver bullet around this stuff. The goal is incremental improvement. Well, the goal is perfection, but we're going to get there through incremental improvement, I would argue. And in Louisiana, student performance, or in New Orleans in particular, student performance has improved, and the achievement gap has narrowed, serving largely the same body of kids that were being served before the reform district was created. So I think the reform district idea is a good one, if implemented well. It'll be years before we have any data on the EAA to know whether or not it's performing well. And one of the challenges with an education marketplace concept is that feedback loops around the performance of schools are very slow. It takes a while to figure out whether or not a school is a good one from our seat. Now, as a mom or dad, right, or as a student, you develop your own opinions very quickly, and you should change schools or pick schools based on that experience as well as the data. But from our seat, we're not getting that kind of information about every individual school in the state, we're looking at data, and it's going to take us a while to get enough data to actually make an informed decision about whether or not something's good. But in the meantime, while it's being created, this will be the last thing I say about the EAA, I think that we need clear rules while we're, clear rules of how it operates while we're waiting for that data to come in. And I think the codification legislation that we discussed earlier, if changed, person of our recommendations would create those clear rules about entry into, exit out of, so on and so forth, assessments and the like, so that we get that clear data. One quick note, I would argue, so I don't know that kind of, you know, public versus private, or for-profit versus nonprofit is the issue, and Richard's comments, which factually correct, so philanthropy has donated, and private companies have donated quite a bit of funds to the EAA to help it get started. Philanthropy and companies have been donating to public education forever in this, or at least for a long time. And so I don't know that they care really whether it's private or public, I mean, I think they feel like all of us feel, which is that education is a public good, and we should all be trying to support its improvement every chance we get. I do think, so last two comments. I think quality matters enormously. And I do agree that different people define it in different ways, but let's be clear that we, part of this, what this whole exercise is about, is to come to some shared agreement about what a minimal quality standard is. And whether you are going to school to learn French, or art, or become the next Michael Jordan, there are minimal quality standards, academic standards, that we expect our schools to reach, because we think that's good for our kids. Outside of that, let a million flowers bloom, sure, that's fine, but every school has to meet those minimal standards of quality. And one of the problems with our system right now is that we don't do any work to ensure that new schools that open are likely to be able to reach that minimum standard of quality. Our work is entirely police work. Our work is entirely police work after the crime has been committed, right? And it's impossible to make folks whole, particularly when the feedback loops are slow. We've lost three or four years of students, right, by the time we figure out that a school maybe isn't performing at the level that it should. Shame on us if the only way that we can think to come at this is, you know, with policing. There are ways to prevent bad schools from opening. And that should be a part of any new system of public education in this state. I mean, that's one of the significant problems that I have with 5923 as it's currently written. It just doesn't make, it's just bad policy for any school to get public dollars. Look, you can open a bad private school if you want, but if you're going to get public dollars to open a school, we should do everything within our power to make sure that it's going to be a better school than anything else out there. Everything in our power. So the last point, this particular legislation, so I completely support our recommendation and in fact would like it to be even more strongly worded for at least three reasons. One is that the timing, so to your point, Greg, which I think is absolutely right, that there are all sorts of policy things in the bill that should be considered, I think the timing of its introduction is poor. Lame duck is just a lame time, pun intended, for us to have those conversations. Let's let the new legislature take its seat. These are folks who were elected, you know, to do the people's work and let's give, let's provide enough time for all of that information that's in this to be vetted and thought about and contemplated and for good ideas to emerge as a result of the provocation. Secondly, I would argue that there's really no contemplation of impact, the impact of this legislation as it's currently written. And given its sweeping nature, that's really necessary. And third, I would argue that unlike a reform district, which although still broad in nature, doesn't have system-wide impact, this really is a blunt force instrument. It's a mallet that will change the landscape entirely when what is probably needed is something a little more precise and a little more thoughtful. So fully support our recommendations as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mary Ann and Mike.
Well, a lot of what I was going to say, Dan just said, so I guess I just will reiterate some of that, that this bill is not a blueprint for fine education, quality education. And it is a blueprint for dismantling neighborhood schools. Sorry, Greg. And that I agree, we are the ones who are going to have to provide the oversight for what goes on in these schools. And I guess lastly, I'm still concerned that cyber schools are going to be getting the same foundation allowance that regular charters will be getting. I think for the work they'll be doing, the staff they'll be hiring, that they could be operating for much less, so.
By the way, save that thought for our next legislative meeting because I think we can have an impact on that in the Oxford McClellan 300 page. I think, I think there's some thought, thinking about that.
Oh, I still be here.
So that's good.
Next month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he'll still be.
Okay.
Well, I still, the thing I.
I'm out the door with you, Nancy.
I'll point up the air next month.
So, okay, if you're here on me.
I'm going to wait on mine till we're, I forgot we had one more after this, all the way to mine. Comment. We're good on that then for this one. And John, Nancy, you want to proceed then to that last one? I mean, I do have one thing. Then I'm going to wait for my comment until the very end.
The last bill we considered at legislative committee over the last two meetings is Senate Bill 620, which is a bill that speaks to conversion schools. Conversion schools in general, and I'll make this very general, are schools that there are fifty-one percent, well, sixty percent of parents have said, we want to have a reform school and we want to have this take place now. Or fifty-one percent of parents and sixty percent of the current teachers have said that. There is a lot in this bill and actually, I have to say that it's been, someone put a lot of time into the wording of this. There are a lot of criteria for what it would take to do this. Unlike the last bill we talked about, I think it's well thought out. I still think that there are some concerns that we have. And so the draft proposal that I'm putting forward to the board today reads, "The State Board of Education appreciates the legislature's desire to increase parental advocacy for their children's education. Parent caregiver advocacy and involvement is important, is imperative, excuse me, if school reform and student success is to take place. The State Board of Education recommends the following issues be addressed in this legislation. One, to highly qualified teachers, including university personnel, teaching the subject area that they have been granted full tenure in at their university. Currently, it does not state anything about that other than that they have full tenure. The validation of parental signatures is inappropriately placed with MBE and would be better served if completed by the Secretary of State. Third, the necessity of meeting all federal requirements is applicable, just as all other public schools." This bill goes to great length to talk about what state requirements need to be met, but I couldn't find anything that talked about federal requirements. And that goes beyond just the federal education requirements. There are many other requirements that schools need to comply with federally that we also need to have in conversion schools. The State Board of Education opposes the passage of Senate Bill 620, parent trigger bill as written. This is merely a draft, a couple of discussion, so I would like to open that for discussion at this point.
Discussion, please.
All paper.
No, 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 no.
It's all accurate, all right, I can't get.
Yeah, nice try, though.
Dan.
I have a, just a quick question, as of not, just from being out of the country, I guess. Does this, so the last time I looked at this legislation, it was, it would have, it would apply to allow for the trigger of conversion of traditional public schools to other forms? Does it, has it, but not allow for the conversion of other forms of schools to anything else? It would only apply to traditional kind of district, is that?
Lowest performing five percent public schools.
Okay, all right. So any school in the lowest performing five percent of any governance type could be triggered to become?
Cassandra, please.
Just to clarify, this is the one item that has not gone through the legislative committee per se. This is the first time all of us are seeing this particular statement. I have mentioned in the legislative committee, and I'll mention here, I don't support the parent trigger bill, period, primarily because I don't believe that a subset of a community should have the right to take over property that has been paid for by an entire community without the say-so of that community. I, while, my issue isn't with, you know, parents, although I think these things that you've lynched here are certainly important. And the second bullet point, I would say that I don't even think the Secretary of State could validate these names because they're not necessarily, you know, on the voter list. These are our parents. And so you literally have to go to every single one of them to determine that they actually are parents. And then how do you define parents? Because you have stepparents, you have.
It's defined under having a real responsibility.
Okay. My overall bottom line is, I can't, I would not support this because I think that this particular parent trigger bill is highly flawed. And even the person who wrote the parent trigger bill for California has said that this particular bill is seriously flawed. It really is an avenue to turn traditional public schools into privately run, in privately managed charter schools. It opens us up to the possibility of, you know, a lot of shenanigans going on behind the scenes. And as I said, at the end of the day, you have individuals who may not even be members of that community who have then the right to essentially remove public property from the public that paid for that property. And to me, that goes against every democratic principle that we believe in, or at least that I believe in. And for that reason, I do not support this bill. Even if they fix these three items, I still couldn't support the bill.
Nancy, please.
I think it's important to remember that, while I understand, I assume what you mean is that if somebody were opting in on the schools of choice and didn't live in that district, but their child went to that school, that's who would have the right to do this?
They could still sign the.
And that may be something that we want to add in here, that they would be members of the community, that fifty-one percent needed to be members of the community. And I could see that that would be, but let's think about this a minute. So I'm going to use, I'm going to use a Dan Varner-ism for a minute. So, what I'm talking about here is that when a school district and its community members, for instance, pass a bond issue, by what percentage does that bond issue pass? Fifty-one percent. Forty-nine percent of that community may not want to pay the extra tax to support that school, but they do because democracy says fifty-one percent rules. If we were to make, and I would think that would be a good addition to also have that as a bullet, the fifty-one percent that approved of this would have to be those members of the community that lived there, not schools of choice parents. I think that it's important that we understand that at some point, we say as a board that we believe parent advocacy and parent involvement is critical in a child's success. And yet here we are, having the opportunity of parent advocacy and parent involvement take place, and we're saying, yeah, but I don't think so. We've got to, really, we've got to decide one way or the other. Which way do we mean this? Do we want parents involved or don't we want parents involved? The vehicle to going to, to address the idea of this just becoming another way to have a charter school or a privately, no, not private, can't do the private, publicly funded other organization other than a traditional public school, yeah, you can't have parents become, have the fiduciary responsibility of accepting state aid. So you have to have some authority that has the ability as a governmental entity to do that. The conversion school is a governmental entity because it has somebody who has taken the ability to do that over that's recognized legally. That's very clear in here. It's very well stated that a local district could do that. One of our biggest challenges in Michigan is we have local districts who are reticent to change the way they do their work. If we could have local districts that would recognize, there was a very interested viable group of parents and teachers that said, we want to try something different, we're desperate, we want our children to have a better school to go to, and we're willing to put our time, energy and money where our mouth is. As a local district, I would hope we would take them up on that. There is such a laundry list of requirements here that have to be completed successfully and for the state superintendent to agree with before they could ever even get permission to become a conversion school, that it isn't anybody y'all come, you can do whatever you want. I'm guessing that it would take very, that there will be very few groups of parents and teachers that can meet the litmus test of what it takes to become a conversion school in this, in this legislation and to put in that application and to meet it and to be approved by the state superintendent. But for those very few that could, God bless them, that they're willing to take and step up and be a part of their children's education. So with some changes, and I would agree, Cassandra, that one about the community involvement in terms of the percentages, I think would be a good bullet to add.
So you're suggesting we would have a vote of the populace then?
A vote of those parents in that school that are community members.
Oh, okay. That's where we differ on this. I, you know, you're right, as the State Board of Education, we do say that we want parents to be involved and we want avenues for that to happen. What I'm saying is the State Board of Education, we also say to community members, we need everyone to pitch in and help schools. We need everyone to open up your pocketbook, pay your taxes, be a community member that supports those schools. And then we get here and we say, you know what, community member, if you don't have a kid in the school, you don't matter anymore. We, we're going to take the school over and, you know, we're going to lease it to someone else for a dollar and what your opinion is at this point doesn't matter. And that's where, you know, if I were to fix this bill, the one thing I would say is, you can't just have signatures of fifty-one percent of parents, you have to have a vote of the people who paid for that school building and for have, to have them want to be part of this too. Because otherwise, you know, we're asking people to support these schools and then there comes a time when their support doesn't amount to anything.
Thanks. Thank both of you. Our internet readings are going up. I think Richard and then John. Those four people are really excited.
We just woke somebody up. We're a soporific.
On the narrow point, schools are a state function that are administered locally. So when we talk about changing from locally voted school board versus parent-appointed board or something like that, we're really talking about who will be the steward for the state for this particular school and its assets. So I think that's, I don't think it's a justice issue, it is, it is a question which will be more efficient in terms of carrying out that responsibility on behalf of the whole I must say, I, I think of Shakespeare's Antony speech at Caesar's funeral, which shows us how volatile public opinion can be. I'm not sure this particular conversion bill is necessarily prudent for the good order of schools, but, so I have my reservations on the broader issue, but on the narrower one, I think who is steward of the public trust is really the issue and it's six, one half dozen of the other.
Truly a Renaissance man.
This is an awfully high bar for references to be made.
So would you like to refer to the current, the current showing of The Voice and perhaps the other?
I was just trying, as John Kerry said, I was for it before, I was against it, or maybe I'm for it and against it at the same time. I am not at all philosophically opposed, there may be a parent trigger conversion effort that can be a good thing and there may be some additional reasons besides the ones listed here for why this particular legislation is not yet it, you know, including what you were suggesting, Cassandra, the original creators of this never anticipated that it could be by for-profit providers end up with a school. But more to Dan's point, though, the big issue in all of this is there needs to be some expectation that whoever then is looked to, to run the school has some expectation and ability to make it be a quality education, not a bad education, period. We don't need to convert schools into worse schools, we need to convert schools potentially into better schools. So, and I think this is another new school creation piece of legislation alongside the House Bill 5923 that needs to be much more fully considered, you know, per Greg's point, there's a lot of good need for many of these variants, but we need to figure out how to put that package together in a way that's about quality and improving learning and avoiding unintended or intended consequences in all the other schools. So I think the bottom line for us should be, Nancy's last sentence, we oppose this as it is, particularly if it is, again, if it's there in the legislature and there's any chance of it being considered in lame duck, I think we should say something to the effect that this is a, there are a lot of issues unattended to in this piece of legislation that need to be attended to for it to be worthy of support.
Thank you, John. Mary Ann.
I just find this whole bill outrageous, I really do. I can't imagine someone thinking it up and then daring to put it into legislation. To me, it's legalized stealing. It's like someone, maybe my neighbors all getting together and saying they want my house. And they're going to vote and they're going to take my, I paid for it, you know?
All in favor of stealing Mary Ann's house.
So I just, I think it's bad legislation, bad for taxpayers.
Well, I'm good. No, I guess I'm not. Dan and then Kathleen, I think, was first and then Dan. Dan, and then Kathleen, I think was first, and then Dan. Or Dan and Ca, you guys are looking at each other. Work it out.
Please.
Well, John mentioned something that I think too, I think this bill, you have to look at this bill in context with these other bills that are being introduced, that have been introduced since this was sort of laid on the table, and nothing happened with it. But I, I don't know, I think the bill is unnecessary. It's just superfluous. Because if we, if they go to work on 5923, or some version of it, this could be fold, easily folded into that, that idea. I think this bill is just unnecessary. And for the, I agree with the points that Cassandra's made, and this stealing, Mary then analogy. But I, it's, it's, you know, the law was passed in California, it was tried, tried twice in California. It's been in court, it hasn't worked. So I don't know why we want to follow that model. You know, it's just, it's just, it's just superfluous at this point. We have all this choice. I mean, we're giving people all kinds of choices. Sometimes I think we give them too much choice. It's hard to make decisions, people, it's very hard. It used to be easy when your kid, you knew where your kid was going to go to school. It wasn't such a problem. Now you have to do a lot of research and figure out where, what's the best place for my school, for my children? And to get back to something that, I don't know who said what now, but, you know, we could have specialized schools and magnet schools, which I would propose years ago. I went to a special, well, it wasn't a special, but it was like a magnet school in New York. But I proposed that 20 years ago already, you know? It's nothing new. But every child should be exposed to, it has to learn the basics. They have to learn English, they have to learn math. They should learn history, and they should learn social studies. They should be educated civically, much better than we do. That's something I agree, we have done, not done a good job on that. We have to do more, but everybody, no matter how much they want to specialize, suppose one, one wants to be a gymnast, and another wants to be an artist, they still have to be a citizen of this country. They should be taking it seriously. A citizen should be a title of, worthy of working toward, you know? We're born with it, we, we take it for granted. But we should, we have to recognize that it takes, has some responsibilities, and we have to teach students that. So everybody has to have that, it seems to me, no matter how specialized a school becomes later, or how they want to impart the curriculum. But basically, the basics have to be for everybody, it seems to be. So I think this is just, this could happen with this bill, I don't think, in the next two months, two weeks.
Thank you. Dan, please, then Eileen.
So I think I generally agree with the, well, I guess there've been a whole bunch of comments made, so I couldn't generally agree with all of them, could I?
Well, you could. That would, you know, be the best.
That would throw a lot of ambiguity into the, yeah, into the mix. So I agree with the recommendations as written. Let me start there, which is probably the only thing important that I will say. But I'll add a couple of other, one other really probably unimportant thing. Kind of, I think the statements of fact about what's happening in California, and the lack of support from the original authors of the California bill are all accurate. And I'm not sure, frankly, I mean, one of the things that does concern me a little bit about all of this work, I'm going to say more than one thing. One is that I don't know how important governance is to all of this, when it boils down to the issue of equality education. I'm sure that there are good charter schools and bad charter schools, and I'm sure that there are good traditional district schools and bad traditional district schools, and I'm sure that there are good private and bad private, and, I mean, you can run down the list. Every governance type kind of has its flaws. And so I worry a little bit about what seems in our estate to be an overemphasis and over infatuation with governance models. And so that's going to have a significant impact on quality of education generally. I suspect that it doesn't. But it's one of the levers that's available to kind of the big public policy bodies, and so we go there. I just don't think it's really time that well spent. Second, and maybe more important, consideration here, and this doesn't speak to this particular bill and its merits, but it is interesting that the primary stakeholders in all of this work really are students, to a slightly lesser extent, their parents. And as a system, we've kind of, we've managed to develop a system that is remarkably able, kind of, impenetrable for parents. And that's not to suggest that this is good law. I just think that it's noteworthy for all of us, that we've developed a system that parents have a hard time, and students a nearly impossible time influencing. That's a problem. That's a problem.
Thank you. Eileen.
Well, my family's in real estate, so I can't let that comment go by. I tried, I tried to try, but I, first of all, I would like to add a provision that taxpayer qualification be mandatory for the 51% majority vote on parent trigger. I do believe that if people are living in a school district, and that they should have the right to determine what happens with that school. But then, today, I kind of heard that we should be proposing that the will of the people be substituted for, excuse me, for prudent financial practices by districts in real estate management. The usual practice is, if you don't need something, you manage it by divesting it, because the district needs the working capital. Ann Arbor's done this, most notably to a Steiner school, which is private and also competitive with the K-12 system, but it was good fiscal management. When I listened to the comments, and I thought, "Should I comment? Is this personal?" It's not. It is education. I'm thinking of Mike Cassely of the Council of Great City Schools, being in Detroit for the first TUTA release, looking at the results that had that city courageously taking the assessment, knowing the results would be tough, scoring at the bottom of the country. And Mike's comment was that that situation is cannibalizing the young. So I would urge us to not politicize this, but rather to say, districts need to move forward. I listened in the legislative committee meeting recently, in which the comments were made that districts and teachers won't change. I don't believe that. I truly don't. And I think that as we look at these mechanisms for trying new options, for creating new teachers in our ed schools, for moving things along in a path, if it proves to be advantageous for children, that we have to send, we have to, we have to do it. So I would love to see perhaps a little less flowery rhetoric and a little more practicality. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we're at a point, I'd like to make two comments that I wanted to say to the end. One is that, that next month, we're going to have a chance to have a similar discussion, I think, which will have a lot of meat to it, you know, in reaction to, we've kind of jokingly said the 300-page Oxford thing, but it, there's a lot of good stuff in there, and there's a lot of stuff in there that we want to, that we want to weigh in on. So I, and I mentioned earlier, I think the parts that affect this department directly are some of the disconnects between this 20-year-old state aid thing and school code. It just doesn't make sense. So that would be one layer. And then the other layer would be some of the policy stuff that's kind of inherent in there. I would also like to maybe think out loud, and here in this discussion, it, we kind of know this intellectually, but I'm wondering, this doesn't need to be decided today, obviously, but I'm wondering if we want to, at least as a staff, present to you some thinking about how we might use our retreat in the spring to take a lot of the thinking that was here, positive constructive thinking, which can come out in being against something too, by the way. And then, and then rather than continually be in a spot where we're reacting, if you think about, at least during my time, the thing I'm most proud of with this team at the board level is, you know, a little flaw here and there, perhaps, the Michigan era curriculum is a game changer. And you watch as these cohorts go through. You watch what's going to happen, because it's not rocket science. We have so many kids that weren't exposed to science and math at all, weren't even given a chance to be, and it's going to be a game changer. So I'm just wondering if we could present to you, obviously, it's not until spring anyway, but some way of thinking at our retreat about, from a practical point of view, what could we have an impact on, like we did? If we didn't, if we didn't initiate that MMC, it never would have happened. I'll do credit to the governor and the legislature that eventually passed, but had to start here. So, you know, trying to pick, and take pieces of this. I mean, I appreciated John acknowledging Greg, that there are pieces in there that we don't like this bill, but there's some pieces in there maybe we package. And then I don't know if you, if I've even been clear enough in the expertise we have in-house. I mean, Marty's had a long history prior to this time in the legislature. We have a new person, as you know, in Wendy, who just came from the House Ed Committee. We have Ross, who was with Dingle for years. We've got opportunities to not only think big and not reactively to what's put before us, you know, but we can actually put this together and then figure out how we want to move it, kind of like we did with the Michigan era curriculum. And then, and then maybe others will be reacting to our thinking, rather than we're reacting to their thinking. Because we could also usher this through in bill form and everything else. And I think the thing that would be, that we'd like to recommend to you, would be possible areas to look at, and then maybe at the retreat, you know, give, give that whole time to that, given that we're already, and I know we haven't met as an agenda planning committee yet, but we've almost filled up the December meeting.
Just by...
What we're going to do with Oxford, I think, largely. And then January's here before you know it. So just a thought, and I wouldn't even need an approval of this, just, that's our thinking, that we might present something to you for how that retreat might give us an ability to be proactive as opposed to reactive. General?
I guess my quick reaction is, A, at our last retreat, we spent most of our time talking about how we wanted to help initiate the kind of fundamental relook at how we organize schools and how we fund them. That effort, we never got going, in part because this set of governor-sponsored short-term idea development began to, it basically happened, you know, with, and so we end up needing to react to that. But I think what you're proposing, we actually need to do over the next month, as we affirmatively shape, here's how to do new school choice well, with quality and good outcomes, to be, you know, more thoughtful and helpful in the attention to the shape of doing this stuff that is going to be most effective and palatable and work for all kids in Michigan. So I think we just have to do that sooner, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure about planning towards a retreat way down the road, when the world will have changed again under our feet, unless we work hard to, to shape it affirmatively. That's my quick reaction.
Yeah. And I certainly, I thought I acknowledged that next month is going to have to be filled with our discussion related to that, or we won't have an impact, because the comment period's over on the 16th, it'll all be in bill form. We'll probably have some discussions in January based on what's actually in the bills. Right. So I mean, I'm sorry if I mixed that up. I don't mean, instead of that. I'm just, I'm just thinking, though, that I think if we're not careful, we were listened to on the MMC, because it's a state board department of ed, there's clarity and attachment to that. I think some, and then we could be thoughtful about, what are those areas that we would be most listened to by folks? And that's all. I'm thinking out loud, I probably should have waited until the agenda planning to get that. I'm not speaking...
As opposed to what you just described on it all. But if you take, I bet I could have listed 15 ideas of substance that are policy ideas today, that if we wrapped together ourselves and got agreement on, would be monumental. We would be taking the lead, and it wouldn't be reacting to these maybe coming up in some other form in, you know, next year at this time. But certainly not, no, I get your point, and make both work. Would you like to, let me see, we've got really good, I'm serious, great job, Marty, by the way.
Wow. So we're going to bring these back.
Pretty dynamic, I know.
Right, we're going to bring this back.
Is there one item we could do before lunch?
Yeah, I think we could, because what we have, we do have really, I mean, to Dan, I think it was earlier point, or Eileen maybe, the smarter balance thing's important, and I'd like to, I think we're prepared to, as best we can, expedite some of this. But what we, if that sounds good to you, we would start with that now. We would dismiss Marty.
Will we have time for the public speaker?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, given the time, and if, a couple of these, maybe we want to think about moving to the December, because we've spent a lot of time on this, and, yeah.
Well, do we want to try one and see where we sit?
Yeah, we can.
After that, and... What would you, Sally, I'm looking for help. What would we, Sally, Carol, and Susan, what would we want to make sure we had today in case we limit the full agenda?
Early time, yes.
Okay, so maybe then we kick right into that one? If we may, would the, I don't know if we, we probably formally need an agenda amendment right now, just...
Are we in this discussion?
Support.
No, I mean, moved and supported to move that up as the next presentation, as opposed... Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both saying, Susan, you're aye. And then, to Cassandra's point, it may very well be, we can't get to, if we didn't get to one of those two, is that...
We'll do your word next, and do that.
Two less times, it's sounding...
I just don't believe like...
Let's see where we, I think we should get one more in after, and if not, we'll...
But aren't we still going to have time for the public?
Yes.
We will make.
Right. Yeah, in fact, that's kind of a term.
Not serious, this is...
It's on.
It's on camera, agreed.
There it is.
I can't see it, but it's on.
You might, you might need to... That's right. You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.